All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to bring to order the special meeting of the Development Commission where we'll be discussing the continuation of our June 5 meeting, the Isaguay Highlands retail site development permit, the Isaguay Highlands medical office administrative site development permit, and the Isaguay Highlands self-storage administrative site development permit. But prior -- before we start that, we have some minutes to approve, and so I'll just ask the Commission if there are any objections to approving the minutes of June 5.
Nope.
There being none, then I think by unanimous consent, the minutes are approved. So my recollection from when we left off last was you were continuing to rebut Ms. Heim. Is that correct, or did you finish that?
We had concluded the redirect of Ms. Heim, so I believe it's the city's opportunity for cross-examination now.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Lell?
Thank you. I'd like to briefly recall Ms. Heim to the stand.
Right.
Ms. Heim, could you please reaffirm that you continue to be under oath?
I am.
Thank you. Do you recall your testimony at the previous proceeding that Shelter had prepared a plat application at the direction of the city?
Yes.
And I believe your testimony also was that Mr. Nivens directed you to not file a binding site plan or BSP application. Is that correct?
I don't remember saying exactly that. Is there somewhere that you want me to look in the transcript?
Sure. Could you please turn to page 25 of the June 5, 2019 transcript? And I can provide you a copy if you'd like. 25, please. Bottom paragraph, beginning with "we prepared." Could you please read that first sentence aloud?
"We prepared a preliminary plat application at the direction of the city."
Okay. And does that comport with your recollection? Do you reaffirm that testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Could you then please turn to page 31 of the same transcript and read aloud your testimony, beginning with the fourth sentence, under your answer, beginning with "at that meeting," line 12.
At that meeting, as you've heard lots of testimony on, was where he encouraged us not to do a binding site plan, but just to do a plat, and described how vesting would work for the plat and the plat and the site development permits and the building permits.
Could I then have you please turn to exhibit C-44, which is your meeting notes from, and specifically from, the meeting of January 17, 2017? And could you please turn to the second page and read aloud the second and third full bullet points from those meeting notes?
Keith said they really haven't done many BSPs in Isaguay at all. Fred Meyer is probably the last one, or maybe parcel 17 at Tallis. He suggested we look at that one. The suggestion was that we look at the submittal requirements for BSP and for SDPs and either cross out or add to them and propose that to him. He said that he's not opposed to it and understands why we want to do it.
Okay. Thank you. So Mr. Nivens referenced in your meeting notes that he is, quote, "not opposed to it and understands why we want to do it," end quote. Is that what you were referring to in your testimony when you said that the city had directed Shelter to file a preliminary plat application in lieu of a BSP?
No, because these meeting notes are from an earlier meeting, so this is from January when we were first starting to talk to him about doing a binding site plan. And at that point, it may have been a binding site plan and a plat. And so the meeting where I -- that I was referring to, when I said that they directed us to just do the plat, was actually at the collaboration meeting that we had for the binding site plan and plat applications.
Did Shelter ever submit or attempt to submit a binding site plan application for its Isaguay Highlands property?
Well, we had the collaboration meeting, which was on both a binding site plan and a plat, and then it was following the direction that we received at that collaboration meeting about vesting and how the plat would vest, and then the SDPs would vest, and then the building permits would vest, all back to the development agreement. That came out of that collaboration meeting, which was for a binding site plan application and a plat application. Ultimately, we moved forward based on that direction that we received at that meeting with the plat application.
Did Shelter attempt to physically submit a BSP application at any time?
Well, I'm not sure what you're referring to as the application. If you start -- if you are referring to the process, starting with the collaborative meeting, then yes, we did submit that. We did not pursue it. But we never -- I've never said that they prohibited us from pursuing a binding site plan application.
And my second question is, did Shelter actually prepare a formal binding site plan application for the Isaguay Highlands property?
We prepared the -- only the materials that were needed for the collaboration meeting.
Did that include a filling out of BSP application?
I don't recall what was included in that, but it's not a full submittal package.
Thank you. Do you recall your testimony concerning the Polygon Single Family North preliminary plat at the previous proceedings?
Yes.
I believe, and I'm using your words from page 27 of the June 5 transcript, that the Polygon Single Family North plat was quite a bit more complex and controversial than Shelter's plat. Do you recall that testimony?
Yes.
What, in your view, made the Polygon plat more controversial?
I think I explained that the biggest thing that made it more controversial is that there's an existing community of West Highlands Park, and that plat contemplated closing one of the two roads that accesses that plat. And so those residents, as well as some others, did not favor that approach, and so there was lots of public input on that. So you're taking an existing roadway that cars drive on every day and turning it into a park. That's outside of the norm of what a normal plat would do.
So were the neighbors that you're referring to, were they opposed to the road closure, or were they opposed to some aspect of the Polygon plat itself? Do you recall?
Well, I think that they were one in the same, from my perspective, because the city was unwilling -- the city staff was unwilling to recommend that the plat be approved unless the city was also going to approve the conversion of that road to a linear park.
And was that conversion ultimately effectuated, to your knowledge?
I'm -- I don't know if it has physically been converted.
Do you know if the city council vacated the road in question?
I don't think it was a vacation. I think, because the city still owns it.
Converted, excuse me. Do you know if the council took formal action to convert that land?
I don't know what action they took.
Do you know if the council's action was appealed?
What action are you talking about?
The approval of the plat or the conversion of the land in the manner that you described?
I'm not sure. I don't think so.
Okay. Were you in the hearing room to listen to Ms. Sloman's previous testimony?
Yes.
Okay. I represent to you that Ms. Sloman testified that the Polygon plat was not appealed. Do you have any reason to disagree with that?
No.
Do you recall your testimony to the effect that Keith Nivens and Lucy Sloman stated that Shelter was trying to slow down the adoption of the replacement regulations?
Can you state that again?
I believe in your previous testimony, you agreed with Mr. Nivens and Ms. Sloman in stating that Shelter had attempted to slow down the adoption of the replacement regulations. Do you recall that testimony?
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
So could you please turn to page 45 and 46 of the June 5 transcript? And could you please read aloud the question and answer, beginning with line 13 on page
Question: Let's talk a little bit about the replacement regulations. Did you hear testimony from Keith Nivens and Ms. Sloman that Shelter was trying to slow down the adoption of the replacement regulations? Answer: Yes. Question: Is that true? Answer: Yes.
Thank you. That's sufficient. Do you recall that testimony now?
Yeah. I was confused about whether you were asking me if I recalled something or if I agreed with something, so that was my confusion about your question.
Do you recall that testimony after having reviewed it?
Yes.
Thank you. What did Shelter do to attempt to slow down the adoption process for the replacement regulations?
Well, I mean, we asked council and we asked Land and Shore to slow down and consider what they were doing.
And how did you communicate that request?
We wrote letters. We test -- or we made public comment. We testified at the hearings.
And the approximate timeframe in which those requests were communicated was when?
During the process of the replacement regulation adoption.
Do you recall specifically what month of what year that would have been?
The month and year of any comment or of a specific comment?
The period in which Shelter was submitting requests to the city seeking to slow down the adoption of the replacement regulations. When did that occur? Was it in September of 2017? Was it in August of 2017? Do you know when that occurred?
I mean, without going back and looking at all of our comment letters, I'm not really sure. We participated throughout the process. So if you want me to look at a specific letter, I'm happy to, or if you will...
No. If you don't recall, that's fine. Thank you. And then could you please turn to page 52 of your June 5 testimony?
Okay.
And refer to the question and answer, beginning with line 4. Can you please read that aloud?
Question: Did you hear Director Nivens' testimony suggest that Shelter never supported the originally proposed replacement regulations? Yes. Or answer: Yes. Question: Is that true? Answer: No. Question: How did Shelter support them? Answer: Well, I think he was referring to the vesting language within the replacement regulations, and he said that he didn't think that we had ever supported it. We supported the initial recommendation, both with verbal comments at public meetings, either at Land and Shore or at council, and also in letters.
Thank you. Please continue.
Which do you want me to read?
Until line 22, please.
Question: And the initial recommendation, just so we're clear in the record, what had that provided for? Answer: It provided for vesting in preliminary land use applications and land use applications in addition to the building permit plat and development agreements.
Okay. Thank you. So to clarify your testimony and my understanding of it, Shelter formally, publicly did support the initial staff recommendation regarding the replacement regulations with the original vesting language? Is that your testimony?
My testimony is that we supported the vesting language with the original vesting language that was proposed by staff within the replacement regulations.
And do you recall when your verbal comments at these public meetings referenced in that testimony occurred?
I believe it was in -- I believe it was in November and maybe in December, and I know that there were letters, both from me and from Mr. Malaney, which I believe, again, were in that timeframe, November and December.
Of 2017?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I am very mindful of the amount of time that this has taken and Mr. Commissioner Morgan's comments at the end of the most recent proceeding that we're essentially going over the same arguments and evidence over and over again, and I think that we have essentially tilled this ground enough. So I would close with that and thank Ms. Heim.
Okay. So...
Nothing further from me.
Nothing further from the applicant either. So it looks like we have -- we're ready to start our deliberation. So I appreciate that. So I think we have some preliminary issues to resolve first. The first issue is the closing the record and making sure that the city and the applicant are in agreement that the record indicates -- the record index accurately reflects the submission of the evidence prior to this evening.
So I think we had a couple clarifying points on the record that we wanted to address. We haven't seen the full public comment packet at this point. I know that there was, in earlier iterations, there was at least one email that needed to get added to the packet, and I don't know if that's been done. And so we want to make sure that that's comprehensive before the record is closed.
Okay.
Let me see. I have a paper copy here, but I'm not fully trusting of this being what's been electronically scanned into the OneDrive. Why don't I -- and you haven't checked the OneDrive recently to see if that got updated?
No. I just don't know if that's the most current or not.
It is the most current, so if it's still missing, then it sounds like we need to address what's missing from that comment letter, if it's -- if you last checked and it was not, still accurately being reflected.
We can -- yeah, we can check the OneDrive. I don't know if it's been added to that or not.
Okay.
That wasn't clear.
Okay. And that was the cover email to some -- was it a prior letter from an earlier proceeding? Was that -- is that the one you -- okay.
Yeah.
Let me see here if the paper version I have reflects that. I don't think the paper version I have does. So we can definitely -- let me make note of that real quick. We can definitely get that cleared up after this evening, if it's still not reflected correctly in the OneDrive. Was it just the one cover email to the one letter, or was there a multiple?
No, I think it was just that. So, yeah, no, it was just -- it was -- should have just been the cover letter for the February 8, 2018, letter from McCullough Hill. That was the email that had attached a letter that wasn't part of the record before.
Yeah. I have a -- in my index, Letter to Ann, there's a David Morris of Regency Centers dated 3/20/2019. Does that sound like might be the email that it's attached to?
Okay.
I'm thinking so, because that was the 2018 McCullough Hill letter, I think, was on behalf of Regency Center. So we'll all make sure that that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then the second issue that we wanted to address is we've had a court reporter and we've had transcripts taken of all of the hearings so far. I think some of the transcripts were used and actually admitted as exhibits in the record, but not all of them. But we do want to make sure that the transcripts for the hearing are part of the record that's being transmitted for this hearing. We were hoping to leave with you, at least for the purposes of deliberation, because I don't know that you have a complete set or witness set that's a blank set of those transcripts, so that you all have a copy of them. And there are some minor, like wording errors within the transcripts that the parties may want to address after this hearing, but that set that we're giving you should be the comprehensive set of the transcripts for this entire proceeding.
Except for tonight, of course.
Except for tonight, yes.
We -- yeah, we, at this point, we have those portions of the transcript that had been entered in as exhibits, numbered as exhibits. It wasn't my expectation, and I'm looking at the commissioners, it was not my expectation that the transcript would become part of your record for the deliberations, but it certainly would be part of the record moving up in the event of an appeal from this proceeding. And so I wanted to see, I guess, give you the opportunity, otherwise the parties are -- it sounds like they're willing to offer the full transcription.
That was my understanding as well, that we weren't going to need a copy of the transcript, but it would be moved ahead. Is that correct?
Yeah. I don't know that that would be something we would need to conclude our business on the deliberations and make a decision, so...
We remember everything that was said.
Yes.
But we don't really need it, so... No advice, it'll be part of the record that goes forward.
Yeah. Good. Okay.
Not needed for our deliberations.
So what I need is a clear statement of how we can decide to -- that the evidentiary record is closed. When -- how do we do that? When do we do that?
Just announce that the record is now closed if there are...
With the appropriate additions that you've mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. So that's acceptable, so we'll say that the evidentiary record is closed with the appropriate corrections or additions that might be needed.
And I apologize. One amendment, I'm -- what we'll do with all of those comment letters is that we'll make those the final exhibit S -- excuse me, city, the last city exhibit, whatever number that will be. C-67 will be all of the comment letters, and they'll be all be sublabeled in the letter format in which they've been shown as the exhibit, so I'll just -- I'll state that for the record, that we'll enter those as Exhibit C-67 to finalize the record.
I apologize, Mr. Lell. I didn't give you a chance to indicate whether you were satisfied with the completeness of the record.
Yes. Thank you. With one clarification, first of all, I concur completely in Ms. Lell's statements concerning the transcript and its role in your deliberations and the extent to which it would be part of the record on appeal. The only other question that I would have is to verify that the staff reports, the multiple staff reports that were originally distributed for these proceedings back in September, inclusive of their various attachments, are in fact part of the record. I believe that that was indicated prior, but I wanted to verify that once more before the record is formally closed.
Okay.
Yeah. If it's helpful, I brought at least one extra copy of the paper index, but Exhibit C-01 includes multiple subparts, A, B, and C, and each of those are within each, you know, 1 through 16 of each of those A, B, and C, which are each of the respective applications with their exhibits.
Thank you, and no objection to Ms. Carey's request.
Okay. So I spoke too soon, but now I'll say the evidentiary record is closed. Am I correct? So the next item, preliminary issue for us, is the commissioner's authority and the decision we need to make on whether we have the jurisdiction to decide on these applications. So I would open that up for discussion.
Well, it seems to me it's a vesting question, because if they are vested to the prior regulations, we have authority to be here. If they're not vested, then we have to be here.
I think there were two questions on authority that were wrapped up together here. One was whether we were the appropriate authority for decision-making on the SDP Process 3 permits, which is what was advanced by staff to commission, which is typically our business. And so on that question, I would say that we would be the authority for the decision make -- or the decision-making authority for those permits. And the question as to whether or not it was the appropriate process is really a staff or director's decision. Second-guessing the process determination isn't the commission's authority. So the staff determination or the director's determination that these were Process 3 applications that were before the commission, the Development Commission, is what is in front of us. And so I would suggest that it is our responsibility, then, to advance those applications through the decision-making process.
I would agree, and I would also like to indicate that it's the responsibility of the Planning Department Development Services to prepare a staff report for our use according to IMC 1804-200B. And so that is the authority under which we've been proceeding, and those are the regulations under which we've been evaluating these proceedings. So that report of 9/17/2018, that staff report, it specifies in Section 3B-1 that the applicable standards of the replacement regulations for Chapter 1819B IMC. And under those requirements, I believe that we do have jurisdiction to hear the proceedings that we've heard. And secondly, I don't think we're bound necessarily by whether we have jurisdiction or don't have jurisdiction in the vesting matter. IMC 1819B-270D-3 states that Level 3 review is required for land use actions on specific streets, including 9th Avenue Northeast and Northeast Discovery Drive, which are adjacent to the property that's been the subject of these proceedings. IMC 1803040 states it's the responsibility of the Development Commission to review and make the decision on Level 3 permit applications, and therefore I think that we do have the responsibility for evaluating these three permit applications before us.
So is that the sense of the group? We have the jurisdiction to make the decision on issuing a -- to issue a decision on these applications. We don't necessarily have to make a decision on the vesting issue.
Well, I guess the question is whether we have jurisdiction to make a decision on the regulations that would be applicable.
Okay.
That was -- which is the point of the majority of the testimony we've heard for the last nine months.
Yes, it was.
I think on that question, I think the third argument's on both sides, but it seems the code is clear, that the decision on determining the regulations or the vesting of an application is responsibility of the Development Services Director.
Okay. And 1801-0500C. Is that -- that's the decision of the group?
Yeah. Again, I guess to emphasize, the commission doesn't have the authority to second -- on that point, second-guess the director's decision. It's not within the scope of our authority.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement on that. So then we move on to the discussion of the applications. So then we move on to the discussion of the applications. So we've heard the city and their position. Do we have questions for the city regarding its position?
Well, I guess maybe the one question about the requirement on the FAR, if the city needs to, wanted to change their recommendation, or you would just change that with regard to the self-storage proposal meeting the FAR?
Right, and what we're referring to here is that in the original staff report.
Right.
Correct, that that held the storage building, the storage application, together with the others, in being at variance with the structured parking requirement of 50%? Is that correct? And according to testimony by the applicant, at least, that did not apply.
I think it was the minimum FAR.
Minimum FAR.
No, right.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, and the structured parking issue is also, I think, a little different from the original staff report recommendation. Because I think the structured parking issue, does that apply to all of the, that does apply then to all three of the permit applications, correct? It's at variance in all?
Right.
Okay, right. But storage building was not at variance with the FAR of 1.0.
And so I guess the question is, do we, if we can make a decision that disagrees with what the city recommends, the city states that they don't believe it met the FAR requirements, but we do, we don't necessarily have to go back to staff to have them revise their...
We can, we can speak to that in our findings.
In our decision, right.
In our motion, right.
Okay. So in sense, we're in agreement that at least the self-storage wasn't out of compliance?
In compliance.
Wasn't out of, or was in?
Yeah.
Yeah, was in compliance. Other questions or issues with the city's position?
Well, I guess, and maybe, I mean, broader conclusions here, this has been, first of all, the regulations that are applicable based on the determination by the Department Development Services Director is that the replacement regulations would apply to these Level 3 decisions that are in front of us. That's what's in front of the commission. So given that set of circumstances, we heard both the city and the applicant in testimony say that the applications before the commission under the replacement regulations would not comply, that they don't comply with the regulation, so with the replacement regulations. So I want to just go loop back and confirm that that is in fact the conclusions that we either collectively heard or that they could restate, that that is their assessment as well. Because that, we heard, I don't know how many times during testimony, that replacement regulation, these applications would not comply, were not designed to comply with the replacement regulation. So I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that question, but it is a, it would be maybe good to hear from the city and the applicant confirming that that is in fact your, what your assessment was.
Let's ask them. Let's let the applicant go first. Is that your assessment?
If I could have just a moment. The applicant agrees, as we have from September, when we first appeared here, that the three applications before you, or that the staff is put before you, do not comply with the replacement regulations. We do not necessarily agree with the reasons in the staff report for the non-compliance, but we do agree they do not comply.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, the city concurs that the applications do not comply. We understand there is some disagreement regarding the extent to which compliance might be achieved with respect to one or more of the individual applications, but the city's position, I think, is consistent with the applicant's, that the applications should be denied under the replacement regulations because they do not satisfy the replacement regulations.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? The applicant's position. How about questions for the city's position?
I think when we get into each of the applications, we can maybe talk more specifically about the reasons for non-compliance. Some of them are substantive, like the FAR question, some of them are more about completeness of application materials and other things. So there's a, there's a variety, I guess, of issues with the applications before us. So I don't know that I have any other questions, but maybe other commissioners do.
I think we should also keep in mind that although these three areas have been identified by city staff to be at variance with the replacement regulations, that there are probably others in the materials that were submitted by the applicants that would be at variance with those requirements as well, in the CIDS in particular, and I'm thinking of the urban design and architecture guidelines, for example. But we haven't explored those at all in these proceedings. So in the discussion, it should probably be acknowledged that there may be numerous other areas, areas of variance, and that we're focusing only on these three primary ones that were called out in the staff report from the city.
Good point.
At some point, I'd want us to be careful, not assume that there'd be numerous variances, just that we don't know, because we haven't been presented with all the materials and the regulations to say, does it meet all these different standards? It's like we hit the three that don't apply, that's enough, turn it down. I guess if, in other words, if for some reason, something came back and they said, well, it meets these requirements, there could be others that it did not meet and would have to come back.
Absolutely true, right.
Through the process again.
Right, because our focus has been limited to these, it may not be restricted to these only, the areas that we would have to look at to evaluate these permits in their entirety.
Right, this was not a typical proceeding for us. I think we knew that at the beginning, I think, and we didn't spend time going through the details like we would typically go through on a project review, so I would agree with your assessment.
So is there further discussion?
I guess, to that point slightly, so in the original, like the AS, administrative site development permit for the medical office, this would be on page 127 of 307, or page 5 of the report. It talks about non-compliance with the replacement regulations. The staff report says the ASDP application does not demonstrate compliance with applicable central isiqua development and design standards, including without limitation of structured parking requirements. But we didn't see any other, we get testimony of all the other potential areas.
Right.
They make it, describe it as if there would, could be others, but we're not really, I don't think, opining on, we're not agreeing necessarily that there are other variances from the code, since we didn't get a chance to review any of those.
Right, and the majority of the testimony and evidence presented in this hearing was about addition, about an issue that is not within the purview of the commission, right? It's a question about vesting. And the question about meeting the central isiqua design standards and related code requirements was not the focus of the testimony or of the evidence that was presented in front of the commission. So again, we're, you know, we can draw all kinds of conclusions, but they may not be, we don't have a lot of facts to turn to outside of the limited information provided in some of the plans that were submitted, limited plans, and the staff report. So I guess we just need to make sure that as we're coming to our conclusions, I mean, that's clear on the record, too, that are in the decision, that, again, we're basing our determination on the information that was presented in somewhat limited form with regard to the determination or the scope of the decision in front of the commission within our authority. So we can probably track through each permit and make a determination at this point on whether evidence we want to talk about.
So, let's do that. Do we have any recommendations for a motion, or do we want to look at, let's look at the site development permit number 1800001 for the Highlands Retail, project number PRJ17-00027? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, based on the testimony and evidence in the record, I move that the Development Commission deny site development permit number 18-00001 for the Isiqua Highlands Retail project number PRJ17-00027, based on number one, the project failure to meet structured parking requirements under central isiqua development and design standards, or two, the project failure to establish a minimum FAR of 1.0 as required in IMC 18.19B.140C, and three, the project failure to include an onsite plaza space at a ratio of 25 square feet per 1,000 square feet of new non-residential development as required in IMC 18.19B.220F.
Second.
First one question was, it had been brought up in the staff report about non-compliance with city's submittal requirements, but I don't know that that's necessarily part of our decision tonight in terms of whether things were submitted correctly, or...
Well, it just speaks, it speaks to the question about what information, the limited information that was presented to the commission for our determination or our decision. We don't generally do a completeness check as part of our decision-making, so for an application, and staff has done that as part of the process, the permit process, so that's part of their conclusion, but the three issues that you raised are significant, nonconformance requirements or conditions in this, or application that I think warrants denial.
Would agree with that, and I believe that those three, as these high-level requirements will apply to the other permits as well, I believe that they provide enough information on which we can proceed to make a decision, even though we're not referring to the submittal requirements, and we're not referring to other potential variances that may exist. I think it's important for us to recognize that we believe we have enough information here to proceed on decisions for these permits.
So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of supporting the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nope, it looks like the motion carries.
Let's spread the love.
Okay, fine. Mr. Chair, I'd like to present a motion on an application. Based on the testimony and evidence in the record, I move that the Development Commission deny administrative site development permit number 18-00007 for the Isiqua Highlands Medical Office Building, project number PRJ17-00023, based on the projects. Number one, the project's failure to meet the structured parking requirements under the central isiqua development design and design standards. Number two, the project's failure to establish a minimum FAR of 1 as required by IMC 18.19B.140C. And number three, the project's failure to include onsite plaza space at a ratio of 25 square feet per 1,000 square feet of new non-residential development as required in IMC 18.19B.220F.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there a discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move, based on the testimony and evidence in the record, I move that the Development Commission deny administrative site development permit number 18-00006 for the Isiqua Highlands Self-Storage, project number PRJ17-00028, based on the following: the project's failure to meet structured parking requirements under central isiqua development and design standards, and the project's failure to include onsite plaza space at a ratio of 25 square feet per 1,000 square feet of new non-residential development as required in IMC 18.19B.220F.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there a discussion? All those in favor of, in agreement with the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move the Development Commission direct its legal counsel for this here in
Rayloah to prepare findings and conclusions for review and approval by the Development Commission Chair, consistent with the Development Commission's decision to deny site development permit number 18-00001 for the Isiqua Highlands Retail Project, administrative site development permit number 18-00007 for the Isiqua Highlands Medical Office Building, and administrative site development permit number 18-00006 for the Isiqua Highlands Self-Storage Project, which shall identify, number one, the commission's determinations on jurisdiction to review the subject applications and the vesting issue, number two, standards and criteria applied by the Development Commission in reaching this decision, and number three, the potential scope, the lack of the full scope of material regarding approval that is not included.
Is there a discussion?
And the third one I added to make, I guess, the point is to make clear, we didn't see all the criteria to review.
Yeah, so, brief background information on the discussion.
Right.
What was and wasn't included in our record.
Hearing none, all those in favor of agreeing, moving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Looks like we have redeemed the responsibility of the council, the commission, we've given some tasks. I'm hesitant to say this, but I'm pretty confident that we're done. And I would like to... And I would like to express my appreciation for the applicant and the city for their professionalism, and hope we can move on from here. Any further discussions from the city?
No, thank you very much for your time, commissioners, that's duly noted and much appreciated. It's been a long, tedious, time-consuming process, and I really do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to express our genuine gratitude for your patience and perhaps even kindness over the last nine months in tolerating all this, and I'm impressed with the way you've handled things this evening, so thank you. I would like to just clarify, however, you guys know how you do your procedures and it's new to us. So the last motion, I believe, is directing Ms. Lau to prepare it, and then the chair is going to sign it, we don't have to wait for the next hearing, and if that's the process, could you give us a rough estimate of when that will happen, please?
Couple weeks, I'll do my best to try and get that out. I understand the time crunch everyone's on, so I will try to make it a priority in the next couple of weeks to have that done, and work with the chair to get that finalized and issued.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll acknowledge that we're working on lawyer time and not engineering time, and so a couple of weeks may be not exactly what we get. We'll get it as soon as we possibly can.
It'll be a couple of months.
So thank you very much, and I.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to reiterate to your comments, too, about all the attorneys that are here, for both the city, for the applicant, and for the commission, all the professionalism and Ms. Hines' professionalism in all the presentations. We sat through a lot of testimony over a long period of time, very knowledgeable people, very well done, and thank you for your work on this, especially our councils, so, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for getting us through this and ruling all the things you needed to rule on.
Yeah. So let's, I'm going to shock my wife, I'm going to be home before 10:30. We're adjourned.
Thank you.